We're going to call tonight's meeting to order. The September 7th of 2017 Muscatine City Council Meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming and welcome. Fran, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Ray Walt.
Present.
Fitzgerald.
Present.
Nat Big.
Present.
Saseo.
Present.
Bynum.
Present.
Harvey.
Present.
Spread.
Present.
I'll present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice-
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. We're on number four on tonight's agenda, and I'd like to inquire if there's anyone here tonight that would like to speak to something that's not currently on tonight's agenda? Please come to the podium, sir, and state your name and address.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Carl Drapoe. I live at 409 Fence Line Drive, Bluegrass, Iowa. I'd like to start out saying I'm a military veteran, and again, I live in Bluegrass. I served my country. I went to Iraq. As a lot of you may have seen, I'm with Local 150 Operating Engineers, and we're currently involved in a labor dispute with Ryan &amp; Associates, a company out of Davenport. Over the company's refusal to bargain and various other issues, I'm out there to inform the public of this labor dispute. Local 150 periodically displays stationary banners to publicly shame companies like Ryan &amp; Associates or entities that do business with Ryan &amp; Associates. On that note, these banners are displayed on the public right-of-way, are never unattended, and are set up and removed each day. The public right-of-way is traditionally a public forum, and bannerings over a labor dispute is considered First Amendment-protected speech. Despite this, the city has attempted to limit this right by relaying the provisions of the city code, which do not contain decided language, and refusing to allow us to even submit a permit to display a self-supported banner along the public right-of-way. We hope the city will reconsider the position and allow us to engage in our First Amendment right to peacefully inform the public of a labor dispute. Again, as I had said, I'm a military veteran, and I bet you if you guys were to take a poll and ask if you supported the military at all for good-paying jobs, that mostly in here would vote yes for it. So on that note, I mean, that's what we're out there doing. We're out there trying to promote that a company is doing an unfair labor practice, and we're just trying to support our benefits and our working conditions, and that's basically what this banner's about. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Drapoe. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and address.
My name is Ralph Burr, 3015 Allen Street, Muscatine, Iowa. The last time I was here, I told you I'd be back every month. Well, I missed last month. I wasn't able to attend, but I'm here tonight. You know, I've been coming down here over the last 25 years about this lift station on Dawson and Hauser, where the sewers keep backing up all the time. So the last couple of weeks, I've been reading about this Harvey and all the floodwaters in Houston. Well, three years ago, we got a heavy rain, and guess what? The sewer backed up in my basement. I got 100 pictures here of my basement, what is damaged and what we're trying to do to clean it up. It's not back to normal yet, and I keep coming to the city, and I wonder what they're going to do about it. So, do you have anything to say to me tonight? I'd like to hear it.
Could you see the pictures?
You can see them if you want to.
Mr. Burr was compensated through the insurance company for that claim.
The insurance company, they didn't pay hardly anything. By the time I had to get a lawyer, I had about $4,000 left, and that don't even cover my basement. But anyhow, I've been wondering. I've been coming to these meetings, and I never read anything in the paper or hear anything on the radio about me coming down here to talk to you. Well, I got a call from the newspaper about a week ago. They wanted to get a story on this, and I said, "Well, I'm not ready yet." I said, "I'll come and call you when I'm ready to tell you." Because you know if it's going to hit the newspapers, it's probably going to hit the TV, and it's going to explode. So I'm giving you people time to get this problem fixed. Do you have any questions now? That's all I got for tonight.
I don't hear any, Mr. Burr. Would you like to leave the photos?
That's fine, as long as I get them back.
You could give them to Mr. Spread, Councilman Spread.
Yeah, so we can get it, take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Burr.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Is there anyone else tonight that would like to speak to council? Hearing nothing, we're going to move on with tonight's agenda. We're on number five for the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda tonight, which includes items 6A, items 8A through P, items 9A through D, items 12A through E, and tonight's bill totaling $5,242,630.40?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries with all ayes. Moving on down to items 9A through D from the mayor. We're going to move to item number B. I have a proclamation called "Sound the Alarm, Save a Life", that I've been working on with the American Red Cross for the last month or so. Every day across the country, seven people die in a home fire, and another 36 people suffer injuries. The American Red Cross wants to end these tragedies and save lives. This fall, the American Red Cross and 35,000 volunteers across the country will sound the alarm by installing 100,000 free smoke alarms in high-risk communities in more than 100 major cities. Sound the Alarm events will be held all over the United States between September 23rd and October 15th, culminating in the Red Cross's installation of the 1,000,000th free smoke alarm since its home fire campaign launched in 2014. We expect that in Muscatine will be the 1,000,000th. Sound the Alarm is part of the ongoing Red Cross Home Fire Campaign, already credited with saving at least 258 lives across the country. Here in Muscatine and our surrounding region, the American Red Cross, serving their Quad Cities and western-central Illinois, and 200 volunteers will help save lives at the Sound the Alarm Home Fire Safety and Smoke Alarm Installation Event on Saturday, October 14th, from 9:00 to 2:00, fulfilling appointments to install these free smoke alarms, replace batteries in existing alarms, and help families by creating safety plans. Now therefore, I, Diana Brodessen, Mayor of Muscatine, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim October 14th of 2017 as the day to sound the alarm and help educate and protect the residents of our community against home fires. I encourage everyone to support the American Red Cross and join in this life-saving event. And I had Denise Bullock coming tonight, but I don't see her in the audience. So I will get this to the Red Cross tomorrow. I have another proclamation tonight that I would like to share with you. Whereas equality, inclusion, respect, and safety for all persons is a core value of the city of Muscatine, and whereas we know that communities succeed and achieve their best potential when all persons are welcomed, and whereas verbal and physical acts that threaten, intimidate, or harm are not consistent with our core values, are not part of our culture, and do not reflect who we are, and whereas we are committed to the human rights provisions of our city codes and policies and the constitutions of the United States of America and the state of Iowa that protects civil liberties and provide equal protection under the law, and whereas we strongly condemn any rhetoric, regardless of viewpoint, that involves threatening or intimidating language and all actions that involve the threat or fact of physical harm to others, and whereas we strongly denounce all hate groups that proliferate hateful dialogue, and whereas we celebrate our community's diversity and welcome all residents who live here, regardless of their national origin or ancestry, race, color, religion, creed, sex, marital status, age, mental or physical disability, political affiliation, gender identity, familial status, sexual orientation, or financial and socioeconomic status. Now therefore, we, Mayor Diana Brodessen and the city of Muscatine, do hereby proclaim that the city of Muscatine reaffirms our community's shared values of compassion, inclusion, respect, and dignity, and our commitment to build an environment and a community in which everyone is valued and everyone has the opportunity to thrive. And we encourage our residents to reaffirm these values of the inclusions and to turn away from the division and violence promoted by hate groups. In witness therefore, I subscribe our name, and I will get this to by state tomorrow. I have one final proclamation that I would like to share with you tonight. As you know, we have several young people in our community who are fighting or who have fought cancer. The entire month of September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and as a result, I'm making this proclamation to honor these young citizens who have been affected. Whereas the city of Muscatine recognizes that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and that we have young citizens who have fought the fight and given the ultimate sacrifice while others continue to fight daily, and whereas the city of Muscatine will observe Kindness and Courage Day on Saturday, September 9th of 2017, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the courage, dignity, and strength of these amazing young people. Whereas the strength and courage of these young citizens have brought together a community, and whereas over 15,000 children and families are affected by cancer each year, and approximately a quarter do not survive, and whereas it is fitting for Muscatine to support Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and encourage citizens to support the fight with the youth and their families, and whereas Kindness and Courage Day is a day for the citizens to reach out to others in their community through a random act of kindness, encouragement, and volunteerism in honor of our youth who have fought the fight. Now therefore, I, Diana Brodessen, Mayor of the city of Muscatine, do hereby proclaim official recognition of September 9th as Kindness and Courage Day in the city of Muscatine. We have several families here tonight, and I would like to give each of them one of these proclamations. Will the families of Parker Hopkins, Hayden Daughfelt, Alexis Basset, Kater Van Blercom, Piper Pigslay, Trevor White, Devon Marks, Riley Collier, and Ethan Houston, please come up? We have several other families who weren't able to be here tonight. We will get these to them. Did everyone get one? Please know that you are all in our thoughts and prayers, and thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate it. I think that I would like you to gather out in the foyer for individual pictures. The last thing I just wanted to note, under item 9D, is that we have established trick-or-treat night for Muscatine as October 31st, from 5:30 to 7:30. Moving on down to tonight's agenda to 11A. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed voluntary annexation to and within the city of Muscatine. A voluntary annexation request has been filed for a 4.18 acre parcel of land and 6.68 acres of adjoining right-of-way for a total of 10.86 acres in the 3,900 block of Park Avenue West. White Distribution and Supply currently operates a business on the parcel that adjoins the proposed annexation and is requiring the 4.18 acres to construct a new building and expand their operations. Because they need city services, they're requesting the annexation of the 4.18 acres as well as the 6.68 acres of adjoining right-of-way. Prior to any formal action by city council, a public hearing is required. This hearing has previously been set for September 21st. However, due to staff error in regard to notification, this hearing will take place on Thursday, October 5th, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Who seconded?
I did.
You're on 215, second.
Councilman Mike Ray Walt, how do you vote?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was there any discussion? Councilman Ray Walt?
Aye.
Councilman Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Nat Big?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. Moving on to 11B. Presented for city council's consideration is a resolution setting a public hearing on the HNI Community Center and Muster Public Library project. In order to adhere to the revised building project timeline, the library would like to begin the construction process as soon as possible. Prior to any formal action on the plans, specifications, form of contract, cost estimate, and setting a bid opening date, a public hearing is required. This hearing will take place on Thursday, September 21st of 2017, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Councilman Harvey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Spread?
Aye.
Saseo?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Ray Walt?
Aye.
And Nat Big?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes. 11C. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from the Police Department to declare four squad light bars as surplus to allow for their sale or disposal. The Police Department is requesting these light bars be declared as surplus. It is the department's intention to sell or give the light bars to other police agencies if possible. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Phil? Alan, do you want a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11D. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve change order number one for the landfill cell number five construction project. It has been found that additional GeoGrid is required where cell number five construction abuts phase number four on the south side of cell number five. The engineer's estimate is an amount not to exceed $8,181. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11E. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to approve the continuation of the contract with the Lewiza Regional Solid Waste Agency for residential household hazardous waste services. The current contract expired on July 31st of 2017. Staff is proposing that the contract be extended from August 1st of 2017 through July 31st of 2020. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11F. Presented for city council's consideration is a request from Building and Grounds for the issuance of a purchase order for the Art Center sidewalk repair. During the Art Center HVAC replacement and other miscellaneous repair projects, concrete was damaged by the contractors. The amounts credited back to the city by the Crawford Company and Northwest Restoration totaled $16,425. A quote from BMW Builders 2 for the repairs totaled $16,200. Staff is requesting the issuance of a purchase order to BMW Builders for this work. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this the sidewalk that's around the back that had all the cracks?
This is the sidewalk that was cracked during the project?
He wants to know if it's the one out back?
Is it the one out the back?
So it's the sidewalk in the front and the back, and part of the parking lot in the back as well that was damaged?
Yeah, right around through the parking lot?
Pardon?
Off the parking lot and going up around the side?
And we mentioned this earlier, but this is the part that was credited back to us, so this is the quote that we've got to repair all that damage that was done.
Technically, it's only $3,000.
It's not even that. We're under.
We're under?
Yeah, it's basically free to us. It was paid for by the contractor through credits, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Brian. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. 11G. Presented for city council's consideration is a request to issue a purchase order to Muscatine Community College for city hall cable equipment upgrades. The proposed upgrades will improve video performance in the city council chambers and add additional features to our video capabilities. The total amount being requested for the purchase order is $9,355.65. There is $11,700 budgeted for this project. Is there a motion to approve the request as submitted?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second?
Second, Your Honor.
Scott? Any discussion?
Greg, do you know, will the upgrades, is there audio on that podium?
Audio on that podium? I do not know, but I can ask Chad.
Extension.
It seems to be very directional, so if they don't have the mic just right, they're not picked up.
I will check. I do know that we have several new features as well, that we'll be able to do Facebook and YouTube live in addition to the other services that we currently provide, so we'll be able to get city council meetings out to more folks and live, so.
Live?
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Request is approved with all ayes. 11H. We're going to have a discussion about some proposed changes to downtown parking. Is that you, Nancy?
Greg bailed on you.
The audio is working, by the way, over the TV. For some reason, it's not working in here, so.
Oh, okay.
As everyone probably knows, there's a lot of things going on in downtown Muscatine that have affected parking. So we, a group of us, Brian and Andrew and I and Greg, started to look at proposed changes. Some of those, it's in the, I think the memo went out. The first one, I think it's working now. The first one is a proposal to consider changing the Second Street free parking. Right now, it's free parking up to three hours once per day in each space. The proposal for discussion tonight only is to change that to free parking up to two hours once per day in each block. That's to address people moving from space to space and encouraging more turnover. And as I understand it, during the discussions with some downtown people during the consideration of going from a one-way to two-way configuration, it was, I think, quite a few people recommended that that three-hour timeframe be shortened. So that's what we're proposing again tonight, is just for discussion. There's already been some input supporting it and not supporting it. So again, it's a change. If it was to be implemented, it would be by council resolution, and then signs would need to be changed. The, my current meter attendants can enforce the once-per-day-in-each-block. Their handheld devices can bring up vehicles that were parked the last time they went through in that block, so it can be enforced. The, so again, that's for consideration for tonight. Some of the other two, with the Come and Go Project on Sycamore Street, the city got 19 parking spaces as part of the settlement with closing that alley. We're proposing that that be leased parking. Right now, our leased parking is nearly at capacity. I've had to move staff parking around to let paid people have spaces, and so we're not out yet, but yet, we're proposing that that, at least at this time, be leased parking at the same rates as the other leased parking is.
In addition, that would also free up leased parking space closer to the Central Business District that we could lease out to downtown folks, by moving staff out further and freeing up closer parking in the Central Business District.
Would those leased parking spaces be at the same rate as the other ones?
They would be, yes.
We still, unless, we've changed it, and I didn't realize it. Don't we still give a discount if you're a downtown resident?
Yes.
Have proof?
Yes, we do.
Then you get a 25% or something? There's a, what's the rate? Do you remember?
I think it's almost half.
Because that question came up, and I told him, I said, "Well, you have a special rate anyway." So. a special rate anyway, so.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have it with me, but it is a substantial discount.
Okay.
We had been actually in giving discounts on the regular spaces until this year, but with the current demand, we no longer had a discount on the other leases.
That was if you.
It is a lower cost if people pay annually rather than quarterly.
Okay. So they, we still do that?
Yes. Yep. And then the third proposal, and this is on Mississippi Drive, when it's completed, we'll be adding quite a few spaces there. And we're proposing that initially that be free parking up to two hours in those spaces. And with all the changes going on in the downtown, that can be reconsidered at a later time. But rather than, I guess we don't really want to put meters in the new concrete. So if we change to a paid system down there, it would probably be other than meters in each space.
Be more likely the consolidated kind that you see in downtowns where you go to a cellular-powered station, put your card in and get a ticket, something to that effect.
Would that be just for the new spaces, not the ones that are currently on Mississippi Drive? Would they stay pay?
I think this is for all of them, because they're all being replaced as part of the project. And I think, I think all of them are the back-end angled.
Everything is reconfigured and everything is back-end angled parking, yes.
How many spaces would that be?
I believe it's around fifty-five or nine. Fifty-nine?
So those are the proposals, and if there's any questions, we can gather more information.
Alan, did you have a question?
I have a question. If they lease a parking space, is that leased, a twenty-four-hour lease?
No, it is. Let's call all the hard questions that I can look up downstairs. I think it's seven AM to six PM, which allows other people to park there in the evenings if they're visiting any of the businesses downtown or the restaurants. So it's only theirs reserved for them for those hours. If they can park there, especially the downtown residents, they can park there more hours than that, but it's only officially reserved for them for those hours.
The business, okay, that covers the business statement, if a resident, the resident spots, are they not for twenty-four hours?
We really can't enforce that.
I mean, the leased spots to downtown residents?
They're available to them twenty-four, twenty-four hours, yes.
Now, I was wondering, if somebody's parked illegally in a leased space, what's the procedure for getting that car out of there?
We have towed cars before. Generally, the meter attendants and this, they would report it. We would give it an initial ticket, check in a few hours to see if they're still there. We try not to tow the first time, but if it's a habitual person that does this, we have towed and we, and we can do that. We try to find them at the people that were displaced, another place that they can park for that day.
Because I was thinking, it's, if I was leasing a space, I wouldn't want somebody else in there when I want it.
And I agree with you. There are people that, you know, from out of town that may not see the signs, though. So we try not to tow for the, for the initial violation.
I had one of those spaces for eleven years, and I can't think of more than five, six times that it happened to be, it was an irritant, but it wasn't a frequent problem.
Nancy, it seems to me like you've already gotten quite a bit of input on this, and you mentioned it, maybe not everybody's in favor of this totally, but it seems to me like you and staff and the Traffic Committee and others have put a lot of work in this, and I think you're headed towards a reasonable solution. It's just my opinion here.
Yeah, and actually, it was actually suggested by a group that it, that we reduced to ninety minutes on Second Street, and we thought that might be a little, little too short if somebody has a business lunch or something like that.
And I've heard that, too, from some of the merchants.
And the ones.
On your proposals two and three, both of them require construction to be complete. So you're, do we have any idea, potentially, like for number two, where you're waiting on come-and-gos to be done? I mean, this may not be for that case until next year.
I believe it was at the end of October, end of October for come-and-go?
Okay, so those parking spots will be available at the end of October. And number three, the parking on the Mississippi Drive, when would those reverse?
That would take effect as soon as, as it's, as the street is open and the parking is open. So we could get the code completed and in place, and then that would take effect as soon as, as soon as it's open. As you may recall, they're going to start doing utility work over the winter and hopefully get to the streets then sooner in the spring.
Do you want a consensus?
It's a discussion item, and if there's any major objections or changes, you know, otherwise, we'll continue along these lines and bring back the required resolutions or code changes, or if there's additional comments or suggestions or discussion, so.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
Which one?
All three, all three of them, particularly the first one, you know, for Second Street.
And it's not written in stone. If it doesn't work well, and there's something, you know, we can always revisit the issue. We're looking to address a problem that's been pretty constant and consistent, and hopefully this, this is, this can address the issue. If not, if there's a better idea or concept that comes up, we can always revisit it, so.
One other comment, that there is some urgency in this with, from the Second Street merchant perspective.
Yes.
You're not suggesting that all three have to wait and happen at the same time? They could be added in as they're ready?
It can be put in place now. Having them all considered now, Public Works can order the signs to have those ready for when the parking is available. And we can actually word the resolution, you know, for, you know, when their construction's completed. There is a minor ordinance change extending the parking zone up Sycamore Street.
Can our, can our meter attendants get around the entire, to every meter, three or four times a day?
Yes.
They can?
This will take, more frequent patrolling of Second Street will take a little more time away, but hopefully it will get people in compliance once they get used to the new.
Can we double the fine for the business owners that actually park out in front of their own, in front of their business? Or have their, their employees park out in front of their business, or, or worse, their neighbor, neighbor's business?
Peer pressure is appreciated.
So I throw that out. Have we had conversations with the business owners on this?
Jim Edgman and, and company had met when we were looking at the one-way to two-way.
Yeah, but that was for one-way or two-way, I mean.
No, part of the discussion was specifically, came before council. Part of the discussion was specifically on, on the timing. And the recommendation at the time was three, three hours free was brought up during that discussion as well. The general consensus was that it should be changed to ninety minutes, although there were participants who thought the one hour and two-hour time would be best. It was agreed that the time should be the same for all meters regardless of what time it was. Getting rid of the parking meters on the side streets to Second Street was also requested at the time.
I don't have a problem with, with two or three, because they're going to come anyway, but I don't, I don't like the fact that we're putting it on each block. Then you're gonna, you're just gonna, the people are still living there. They're gonna find a place, you're just gonna have them moving to more places. I don't, I'd rather have that consensus with those owners that are the people that live there before we just jump on moving it for two hours per day each block.
Well, don't forget, there is free parking, block and a half, two blocks away, and they can park there for free.
At the Mississippi Drive, where we have all the construction going on?
There is, but temporarily, but there is free parking available.
I'm saying, I mean, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to approve one unless we already have something for even two or three for them to go.
Right. We also have ten-hour parking spaces, and then the only other really, the alternative, at least from my perspective, is to put those same meters on Second Street and, and start metering Second Street again.
I'm not going to do that.
Really, Second Street is a street that we want to encourage turnover on. We don't want to encourage long-term parking on. We want people in and out and going and utilizing those shops, those restaurants, and during the day.
I would rather encourage having that input from those owners, in my opinion, besides it just being a one-way and a two-way conversation that we had. You, you said two different things, I think. Are you talking about the business owners or the people that live there? I think you said both at different times. There, there were both people that lived down there, and there are business owners as well, too. I mean, how many, how many rental homes are down there? I don't know.
Lots. We want to encourage people.
I want to, I do, I understand that, but I'm not, if you start putting them on each block, I, I think I would rather just have some input from that group as well, before we just jump the gun and start saying, hey, we're going to make a change. I mean, we, we had a lot of input on the one-way and the two-way. Turned out to be good, I think, in my opinion, that we made that decision, but at least we had their input.
The major complaint, and it's one that we hear constantly, and really the reason for the, for the block-by-block suggestion is, is exactly what was mentioned before, is, is the, the number of employees and owners that are parking and then moving stall to stall or space to space on Second Street.
So maybe we already know who those habitual violators are. I'm, I'm just suggesting having a conversation with some of those business owners and homeowners that are in those areas.
I think the meter attendants could give you a list of whose.
And they probably could. They probably could, but it.
But.
Before I just have, you know, I haven't had a lot of input from those homeowners. When we just did the one-way or two-way, you know, I went down there, talked to some of those owners and said, hey, what are your thoughts on some of these things? Here, we haven't had any input, and we're just getting through proposed changes. I just, I'm glad we're just doing it as a discussion, because I'm not, in my opinion, I'd rather have Jim or somebody come up here from staff and say, hey, yeah, we talked about specifically this. We talked to these seven business owners, these twelve homeowners, and this is the, the input that we all came in with, which two hours parking lot, or two hours parking versus three. And they're okay with it going on each, you know, per block.
Is the parking ramp that's going in, is that going to be restricted to hotel people only, or is there going to be some leased?
It is private.
It's going to be restricted.
No, I know, it's private.
Designated to the hotel.
Okay.
Nancy, how many parking spaces, refresh my memory, did we lose when we made the changes behind Guadalajara?
It was less than we had originally estimated. We were going to take all of them along the alleyway, so I'm thinking it was maybe, maybe eight. I would have to go to my notes, though, because we do still have quite a few in that lot.
Any other discussion?
Well, there may be some time to talk to some more, to some residents, but I think we still need to move along on this and see, you know, at that point, and take some action.
Well, I mean, right now, it's just a discussion piece, right? I mean, we're just discussing it. We're not voting on anything today.
Right, correct.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's why I'd rather see some discussion with those business owners and homeowners and have somebody from staff tell me that we had that discussion.
We all got an email earlier today from Jeff.
Well, that was one.
Right, but, but I was, my belief or my, the tender of that email was that there were several people involved in this process.
Fifty-six people that weighed in on it. Eight of them were business owners, five of them were residents. Not everybody identified what they were. These are just people that, probably what they described.
I didn't see that email.
Yeah, and I haven't got to that.
Fifty-six, he said.
Haven't got to that either, on that email, but.
Hundred sixty-two hybrid comments plus the.
If, if, and again, Ms. Strasborn, if, if the, if the public downtown business owners are in favor of it, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that we're making our due diligence to have that conversation before we make that decision and me making that input and say, yeah, I'm just going to go with it. That's all I'm getting at.
First day we're dying. While we wait.
Go ahead.
It's been almost ten years since the change has been made. Options have always been moved.
If, if you're going to talk much longer, I'll have you come up.
No, we're good.
I understand.
I'm all right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
We, if, if there's a majority wanted on the next agenda, we can get the documents ready, and then there can be discussion at that time. And if council isn't ready to act, it can be, it can be tabled, too.
I think that'd be the best idea, get it on the agenda.
Next week's just in-depth, isn't it? Okay.
Yeah, so it'd be in two weeks, yes.
Thank you, Nancy. I know you guys put a lot of time in this.
Right, thank you.
The next item on tonight's agenda, we're going to have a discussion on a proposed TIF request. Andrew?
No.
Who's that going to be?
I'll take that, Your Honor. We also have Greg Jenkins from the chamber. And as you see tonight, we have requests from White Distribution for the city's basic TIF program, ten years at fifty percent. You have attached, you have the letter of request, and attached, you also have an estimate of what that amount would be over ten years at fifty percent. In the, in the letter, Mr. White notes that the project will generate fifteen new jobs and average wage of sixteen seventy-five per hour, and have a general, generate construction of a hundred thousand square foot building at a cost of approximately six million dollars. They're estimating the value of the building at two and a half to three million dollars. Use three million dollars for the basis of the, of the estimate. And I don't know if Greg Jenkins from GMCCI would have any additional comments to make, but we're here tonight to see if there's council consensus to move forward to the next step or next phase, which is contract preparation and bring it back for council consideration.
Greg, did you have anything to add? Okay.
And this is subject to annual appropriation, as all our new TIFs are?
Yes, yes, they are.
And we're well within our debt limit, I'm assuming you've looked.
Oh, yes, yes.
And those are the TIF questions I'd have.
This fifty percent over a ten-year period is basically, we've given Greg authority to authorize that without seeking council's approval. He's brought them to us every time, but it's, it's in the agreement that he could sign off on it and be done, so I, I don't see any, personally, I don't see any issues with it.
Just a general comment, not necessarily related to White Distribution, but we are taking a closer look at that area. If you recall, we did a study some, sometime back, thirty-eight sixty-one connector. We have strong interest in housing in the Hampton Inn area, and now off of Highway Thirty-eight, we have some strong interest in, in that area as well. As part of that discussion in connector, there was a road and some additional infrastructure. So I may, as part of this, be asking the City Council, be doing a little bit more work in evaluation, bring back some discussion, maybe asking council to capture some additional TIF for the city to help towards those infrastructure costs. So relate it to this, but directly for the city's use, so.
Any other comments?
So I, I talked to Greg briefly about this when I first was getting explained some of this. When a company, for example, in this case, says they're going to bring fifteen new jobs and good rate, how do we, how do we ever check that, or do we?
On an annual basis, we send out a letter asking the companies that, that have TIF agreements to report back to the city if they've met those requirements and sign or certify that they have done so.
That they did bring the fifteen new jobs and.
It's essentially a compliance certificate.
And that we. And that we, right, right. And we have, you know, on, on a couple occasions, we worked with them all to eliminate that TIF, reduce our debt limit, that was a joint project. We have one industry that's in non-compliance that is not receiving those TIF payments at this point, and then we have one that was eliminated at their request because they could, working with the, with their assessed value, they lowered their taxes and were, so the, the TIF was null and void at that point in time. But in general, folks are in compliance.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anything else? Hearing nothing, we'll move on to the rest of tonight's agenda. Communications from Council. Greg, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, no, I just assumed that we have consensus so that we can move on with construction now, but I didn't hear that, I mean, so.
For White?
Yes, for White, just excuse me.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
There you go. Moving on to communication from council members. Councilman Ray Walt, do you have anything tonight?
Yes, please. Drove by, once again, the White Way Hotel, it's, we all know what it looks like. I'm asking that the city carefully examine it for code violations and see what the state of it is now. Was that done, has that been done recently?
Not recently. However, we are, and really can't do anything until the environmental assessment is completed. Once the environmental assessment is completed for that area and the carve around, carve a corner, then we can, based on what we do, it's my understanding, we have to wait for the environmental assessment to be completed. Because that, we can't send a notice to abate, and if failed to abate, we can't tear it down at this point in time until that environmental assessment's been completed, so.
But it could be notice to.
We can evaluate it.
Make sure the building is closed, closed up.
I'll confirm and see what we can, what we can do.
Meet those requirements.
EPA is here to help us again.
But I, I will confirm what we can do today.
Thank you.
And at a minimum, we can certainly document.
That's all.
I thought you had. Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Councilman Saseo?
I will be gone next week, but I'm sure you guys will be able to hold the fort up for the in-depth. I don't have anything else.
Councilman Natbig?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman Bynum?
Yes, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to announce to the city of Moss Creek, I will not be running for, for Board City Councilman. I will be here until the end of the session, but I will not be here, I am not physically running for that office. Resigning is because of my health situation. It's steadily gone downhill in the last four, five months. You've all been great to work with. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Bob, we all appreciate.
Yes, yes, Bob.
Councilman Harvey?
Just a reminder, second Saturday coming up, as I understand it, the second to the last one. And a quick question for Greg, what's the status of the Fifth and Mulberry situation? Any progress?
I believe I put an update in my last weekly update, or the one previous to that. I haven't had an update from Adam on that, that is going through the process. We've been working with the, the city attorney's office, all of the paperwork has been filed for the 657A process. I haven't had an update since that last city administrator update, so I, I'd refer you to that one for the most recent, but I'll ask Adam for an update on, on where we are, if there's been. There, there's a timeframe that we were waiting for before we could proceed.
To your knowledge, we still have interested parties?
Yes.
Did you have anything else, Councilman?
No, that's it.
Councilman Spred?
Nothing at this time.
Staff?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
I just had a couple of things to piggyback on Councilman Ray Walt. I've had a couple of different calls recently about a house on Locust that is in really bad shape with critters living in it and windows busted out, and it's been that way for quite a while, so, no, I don't have an actual address. Is it?
Yeah.
And it's supposedly really bad?
It is.
I'm, I'm sorry, it was the?
Longfellow's House.
Longfellow's House?
Thank you, Bob. Also, I'd just like to ask for prayers for the family of Bob Kemper, who was killed in a car wreck last night, as well as prayers for healing for the person who survived the accident. I have a couple of save the dates. The next copy with the mayor is September 23rd at 9:00 a.m. at Happy Joe's. And of course, save the date for the Fireball Run, the race coming through, September 26th, from 11:30 to 2:00. I know that's a working day, a Tuesday, but maybe your employers will all give you an extra-long lunch that day. That's all we have for tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Greg?